All right. Good evening, everyone. The time is seven P M. And I will now call this budget workshop of the Board of Selectmen to order. So tonight, we're going to be going through the budget workshops for these departments, public works and other related funds, grounds, maintenance division, Parks and Recreation, long range capital, and then we'll see where we are with time after that. All right. So I'm going to turn it over right now to our Finance Director, Tom Robinson, who is going to go over those department budgets.
Good evening, everyone. Turning on page fifty seven. This is the Public Works Director's Budget. This budget is made up of two full-time employees, the Director and the Administrative Assistant to the Director. Did you see some increases in the hazardous waste? This is a program that's run by the Lower River Cog. And we see this, we see increases in these amounts. And therefore, we have put twenty five hundred dollars additional funding in that line item. Other than that, that is what's the no other changes except for payroll increases. That's a three point one two percent increase. Page fifty nine is the Highway Division.
Hold on, can I just pause? Is this on YouTube? Okay. I just want to make sure, but it's being recorded so that we can read uploaded afterwards. Okay, as long as we get that. Okay.
Highway Division, the Highway Division has nine full-time employees. We have some increases here in the overtime, and that's due to more storms, not in the snow area, but in other times during the year. We also see some increases in the tree removal and replacement budget. The state of Connecticut contract was renewed, probably a year or so now ago, and the prices did go up in that contract. Still quality pricing, but the prices did go up. So to get the amount of work completed, we need to go up in that line item. Storm drain cleaning, similar scenario as we continue to bid, the price continues to go up on those. Basins are remaining roughly the same, but the prices do go up. We have some, you'll see increases in the uniforms for everywhere because they might from six fifty to six hundred. So it's about six fifty times the number of employees. And then the street signs, we have seen the cost of some of the street signs that go up. Seems like we need to replace signs more often. It seems like some either get damaged, stolen, or just all of the like. So the global increase in this budget is three point three one. Vehicle maintenance is made up of one mechanic and one assistant mechanic. There were personnel changes, therefore there's no change in the global regular payroll line item for this year. We did go up slightly in equipment repair as we do have our fleet is aging as well as prices of repair costs are just continued to go up. There was a dip in twenty three. There was a change in personnel, and there was a time period where there was only one mechanic. But the twenty three was not the norm. It was, it was an outlier. This is a point eight six percent increase in this budget. Next budget is the Town Engineer Budget. Many of the projects here are for the public works. We have public works engineering and site plan reviews are two of the larger areas. The planning and zoning, wetlands, as well as public safety engineering and miscellaneous engineering are some of the areas that we've adjusted on there. There's a few things we had noted that road drainage three oh eight oh five was lowered by three thousand as believed this line item did not require those funds. So fifteen hundred dollars was moved to public works engineering. Fifteen hundred was moved to public safety engineering. So we have a one point nine percent increase in this budget. Street lighting, street lighting is the majority of the streets within the town. Traffic signals is in this number as well. We are, they, we have a decent contract on our on the, on the distribution, the supply. It's the distribution costs. It's the unknown ever sources come out with some commentary that they may go up a very, very high level on the distribution. So we're trying to hedge that increases, you know, with reasonable increases. So we have gone up on two percent on this budgeted item, assuming that higher amount of distribution charge. Oh thirty six, grounds maintenance. Grounds Maintenance is made up of four employees plus about a ten percent of the ground maintenance supervisor. This budget is just the increases in the payroll costs of the employees. Overtime, we left around the same. That is the overtime for snow for the grounds divisions. That's why we often keep that at the higher level, assuming the years where snow is high. Few of the years we've got away with lower snow years. But if you can see back in twenty two when snow was more prevalent, you were, you were at a fourteen thousand dollar number. Continuing down the budget here, the, the department tried to hold the line on the majority of their line items, and there's really not much of a significant differential. And the overall, the overall is a two point five seven. A lot of the employees are newer, so there are steps included in their global wages. Thirty seven is the Building Maintenance Budget, up one point three seven percent. There's three full-time employees in this budget. We, they, the, we also, in this budget, we have the telephones for all the town wide. So we have seen Comcast as well as Frontier, Frontier, because we're under the state contract, is held pretty strong, their pricing. But there are certain areas that have gone up and potentially continue to up Comcast does go up and has gone up. So we were trying to, we raising that slightly to cover those expected increases from Comcast and into our frontier. Going down the line item there, you'll see the increase for the uniforms as we had talked about. We're hoping that in this budget here, we hoping that some of the supply savings that we had seen in the electricity will cause, it will not cause, even though if the distribution cost goes up, we're hoping to mitigate that. So we were, we were lowering that line item by twenty five hundred in this budget. As we had seen, the supply cost was, was quite a bit better there. Snow removal. This one's, this one's a tricky one. It can, you know, it can be a bear in a bad year, and it can be a saving area in a good year. You know, obviously that we could always continue to increase overtime rates here as salaries go up. You know, we generally should try to increase that, but in this year, try to stay as flat as we could. And left the overtime and the road material is the same with a no change in this budget. So those are the general fund items that are related to public works. We're going to skip now to page one thirteen. The sewer fund. The sewer fund had a two point nine four percent increase in expenditures. We try to take the expenditures and kind of drives the revenue side of this operation. And, you know, the twenty three, there were some strong collections and user charges. There were some strong past collections which caused some positives in both the water and the sewer. There were high past collections. So we're not necessarily assuming those high past collections as the items were collected. So we're showing, expecting some increase here in revenues, expecting some increases in interest and liens. And then there's other, the other items, there's not really much of a change there. We yeah, I have a small estimate for processed material and small estimate for other revenue, and that interest is the interest on the monies that are held for the debt, which there's no debt. So there's very little money in that account. Other than the debt of the fund. And the personnel items is made up of the three employees as well as a part-time, halftime of the full-time clerk of the Water and Sewer Department. So you have the three main employees and then half of the Water and Sewer Clerk, which is split with the Water Department. So those are the related payrolls. There was a change in family dynamic. Thus, the increase in medical plus in medical is expected to go up around nine or nine and a half percent, ten percent. So that was why there were some changes in that. Service contracts is up slightly. That's just the normal increase in those accounts. And the majority of the other line items stayed quite consistent, as that was another attempt to stay consistent by the department. Moving on to page one sixteen, this is the Water Department. The main issue that we did in this budget was we put a full-time position for a half year, starting in January. So you'll see that increase in the regular payroll. You'll see some of that in the medical insurance. You'll see some of that in the pension plan, slightly in fight of Medicare. On the revenue side, we, again, like I said with last in twenty three, we had strong interest in lean collections and past taxes. Once COVID was kind of over, we could be able to have an ability to push harder on on some of the, some of the, during that period of time when COVID was very active. It was a, there was moratorium on things you couldn't do. So some of those, once they freed up, we were able to act stronger on our collection processes, and we were able to do that in twenty three and continue in twenty four with our tax cell procedures. So you did see some increase there, strong increases in user fees and interest lanes in twenty three. We expect some increase in twenty five, but not from past years, but not significant like it was in twenty three. Meter charges were estimating closer to what did come in in twenty three. And then meter sales, we're estimating some increases. Again, there should hopefully be some of the brainard space should be here as well. We're hoping for those revenues as well. But we go under expenses, we had talked about the additional person, service contracts, we went up by two thousand for continual increases in service contract type work. Water, we're trying to remain constant, consistent with our amount from twenty five as there wasn't necessarily an expected increase from M D C. So that's a true statement, right, Ryan? Yeah, thank you. And then we, if you do see throughout there municipal insurance went up slightly as we, you know, had an increase in our global insurance that we'll talk about tomorrow, but you'll see it throughout the budget of all the other line items if there was an allocation of that. We see that we estimated a five thousand dollar increase in road materials. This, when we do when anytime we have any water main breaks on a state road, we have to make full depth repairs. There's a current, there's a bid right now that's outstanding out to the public. And these, these their requirements from the state of how we must fix the road and they you know, their quality repairs and therefore they're slightly costly. So we need to have a little bit more funding in there to cover that type of activity as well as fix our own roads when, when we break roads, when we have water main breaks on our own roads. So that's what the road material money increases therefore. Water supplies do continue to rise, so we had increased that slightly. And the, the interest in the principal and interest is per the amortization schedule. And we had left the capital non-recurring the same amount due to the fact that we had added the halftime employee for half of the year, full-time employee for half the year. So we left that number the same. Global four point five four expense increase of the global expense budget. Page one twenty two is county road, county roads and amount that the town state of Connecticut provides to us. These are amounts that we utilize for various options. Some majority of we use for our chip ceiling. We also do off, also pave some of our town roads with these funds when, when chip ceiling is not the option. So those funds come in from the state twice a year, and that's the, that's what this budget is for. Next page would be one twenty seven. That is the resource recovery department. Resource Recovery Department does have some challenges within the revenue cycle. We continue to monitor that and watch that in at some point if they continue you know, to, to not meet objective or hit the objective, there's possible, we gets talked about increases to those fees, but right now this is, does not necessarily approach an increase to the revenues. It's, we're trying to we're hoping that the usage themselves will go up and hit meet the budgeted amounts that we had already had there. We did not change them that much. But we're hoping that we can hit the numbers. The transfer in did go up in this budget as, as again, the revenues are hard pressed to generate the global amount needed for the department. But so that has, there's two employees in this budget. So that's page one point eight, you'll see that. You see they're related, if I could, they're related benefits, contractual services, the main service contract here is the is the brush pile shredding or removal and grinding. That's one of the major causes of that number. There is some also, you know, some amounts for software and some other other maintenance service agreements that maybe for the compactor and such like that. We do have the other line items within this budget. We've tried to keep as consistent as possible. There was some increase in the disposal fee per the contract. So that fee is going up. So we did try to increase the M S W in the E W disposal amounts for that increase in, in fee. Next budget is the one thirty is the Building Maintenance Fund. This is definitely a budget that we could definitely increase money into for both the town and the board, but we've left this more or less as a forty one thousand transfer in for both departments, definitely well utilized by both the town and the board. The place, the, the thing that we may need to talk about in time on this budget would be transferring in at some point of like a fifty thousand dollar cushion if the insurance has made a stronger interpretation on the rule of water and how water is infiltrates the buildings. And the, many of the claims that we've had that have been covered at the regular deductibles are now going to possibly be considered flooding. Therefore, the flooding deductible would apply. And if the flooding deductible applies, that's roughly around a fifty thousand dollar deductible. So in, in theory, at some point, it may be good for the town to put in funding and in this where there's a baseline of an additional fifty thousand for these two, so that if those instances were to arise, there would be funds available. There are areas, the biz often has water concerns based off the way the flow is on Main Street and this parking lot in this area, as well as a senior center have issues. A little bit high school, bit of a little complex in certain areas, but they've worked on some of those. But in this instance, that's not addressed here. At this point, this is the forty one thousand that we normally put into the town and to the board. And these are mostly for deferred maintenance types of things or things that have a hit that aren't in the capital that require it or maintenance is just farther, you know, it would just further deteriorate the operating budget. Okay, page one thirty two is the Parks and Rec Budget. There are some proposed increases for property rental fees. There were some changes that the Parks and Rec Commission made to the various rental fees, and they're trying to improve that as well as I believe that is the some of the fees for advertising in the ball field. So there's, that's positive of an increase there. Miscellaneous is often various contributions or donations. The programs are received school year. This was the kids' last program. Pre-COVID, we were hitting those ninety salon thousand numbers when we were in the youth service. I think there was more programs at the time. We're having difficulty hitting that ninety nine thousand number. So we're lowering that to eighty seven. Still probably have a channel to get to that number. But that's the number that we've lowered it to at this time. Program fees adult seem to be hitting more in that seven thousand range. And program fees youth, the Parks and Rec Director thinks he's going to be able to look closer to the forty thousand dollar number in this range. Summer playgrounds, hopefully we can get back to our pre-COVID levels. He's estimating a hundred thousand in this line item. And summer sports camps estimating around twelve thousand, five K road races at six thousand. So obviously the charges for services are are they're, they're high. We hope to get to these numbers as you can see in twenty two and twenty three. We've not try to stay, to keep the expenses within line. Minimum wage going up and other wages going up, you know, continue to be difficult to absorb and to have Parks and Rec programs that, that make money, but the director continues to work on that. Expenses, you'll see we'll have the, the director himself and his assistant. Temporary payroll is generally the payroll that is for the Kids Blast Program. And then the teen recreation payroll is for all other type programs. So more or less the increases there are the attempt at increased revenue as well as increase in, in wages that are required based on law changes. Overtime is more or less the overtime that is done at the schools for programs that are park and rec related. We have to pay the overtime of the custodians in this budget. That's generally what the overtime is for. And then the remainder of those are the benefits for the, the employees. Service contracts is the amount for the, more or less the software vendor that exists as well as some other minor service agreements that they have. Water and sewer, that's, you know, has some of the park splash pad in that number as well as some of the other, you know, the other park areas and there've been the venues there. So that's a, you know, that's a tricky number there to to approach. We, you know, in, in twenty two, we were around the twenty thousand and twenty three, we're at twenty three. We're increasing that slightly to thirty four. So it was twenty to thirty six, and now we're increasing it slightly to thirty four. Hopefully that we can hit that number that may be low. We'll have to see how that shakes out. The rest of the program activities are, are more or less set up to have expenditures that help generate the revenues. So that's kind of how those expenditures are set up. That's what we have within the Park and Rec Budget. Next area would be the Capital Improvement Plan. So the Capital Improvement Plan and the General Fund. Simply we have a typo in that first line. That should be five hundred and sixteen in a in the third bullet there should be five hundred and sixteen thousand five hundred. It's funded by the General Fund. Things that are funded by the General Fund in the planning and building and planning department, we have a grant match leverage of ten thousand. Seems lately that the various, the C is requiring matches on more and lower items that, that we, when we put in various grant applications. So it's been beneficial to have some monies within that line item. So we are, you know, we put the amount that we thought we could allocate to that, and that's a ten thousand dollar number. Planning in building and planning, plan of conservation development, this is the year. This is the cycle year that we are required to do our updates. This is one of those ones that you're required to do, got to fund it. Hopefully that this will be enough funding. There has been discussions that there's somewhere that, that they, that they, if you do a re, if you we assume that we are believing that we're going to do an update. Not a whole complete rewrite. If you're in a rewrite zone, it could be above a hundred. So the last cycle was a strong report. Yeah, I believe they're going to do an update. So that's a requirement. Fire Department has SCBA bottles sixteen thousand. Fire Department Thermal Imaging Cameras thirteen thousand. Fire Department's A E Ds five thousand five hundred. Grounds Maintenance Ride-On mower replacement, a hundred and sixty five thousand. Grounds Maintenance Ventrac Tractor Attachments, eight thousand. Library A E D replacement, three thousand. Parks and Recreation Monument Restoration, just putting a placeholder amount in there of ten thousand or some, some of those require matches. Some of that is just to get us started and get the funding beginning. That's something that has to be looked at to determine what that cost is. I don't know if we're necessarily at that point, but we are at a point where we know we need to set some monies aside to begin that restoration.
You want to talk about the match at that time?
I don't know, but I thought off the top of my head.
It's a fifty percent match, so. Or a hundred percent.
I believe it's a fifty, that's why I didn't, I believe it's a fifty percent match, but it's you got to come up. It's, it's because we're on the historic, I believe this is on a historic document list and but you have to apply for that grant and get the grant and, and then you have to have the match to put it up. So you have to get all those things approved, which were not anywhere near those things, but if that was the case where you if we were able to go for that grant, there would be a required match. And at this point, we don't have a necessarily a cost estimate of what this would be. So at this point, we're just going to put a ten thousand dollar amount there to start that funding process. And then even possibly if there was a consultant was required to help. Um, and then even possibly if there was a consultant was required to help. Design or design the repair or whatever, there will be some funds there available if uh if that was before the match. Um, next item was the police department cameras. Uh, so traffic cameras, I believe, for forty-eight thousand dollars. Uh, DPW Highway Sidewalk Reconstruction Non-Grant of forty thousand dollars. Um, DPW Building Maintenance HVAC Upgrades, um ten thousand dollars, we try to continue to put in monies. Um, for various uh HVAC units within um the Town Hall and Buck Foreman. Um, they're quite expensive uh these replacements here in this building range in the. Six thousand dollar range, um some of the ones in Town Hall are in the four thousand dollar range. So we try to put some monies away, this is obviously not necess not, it's not enough. Uh, but it's just us trying to fund some of this uh of these uh replacements that are needed within uh these various buildings. Next one is the DPW Highway, um, this is replacement of pickup truck. This is a main line uh pickup truck for the. What division is that for, Ryan? But what's the uh truck for, what uh highway supervisor? So it's a main line, frontline vehicle. Uh, townwide computers including backup appliances, this is the amount of monies that we set aside for our various um. Computer replacement programs, um computer needs, technology needs. Um, and then and then every, I believe every four years is a larger number for that backup appliance. But um we try to accumulate funds so that we can do that. So that's a total of a five hundred and sixteen thousand uh five hundred number. Uh, the low sip number is uh. More like in the ninety range, but we had, it was around a ninety range this year, um. They've made a slight change to that program where it's more, seems like it's gonna be amounts of money awarded. The old method you would be, you would apply for the, they would give you an allotment as of March first, it would become available, you would apply. And uh then you can get it approved and it would, you know, carry on. At some point now, it seems like they're gonna provide you the money by June third. And then you have to report on a, like around at something around a September timeframe, so it's a very quick turnaround. Um, but um appears the amounts are allowed to be deferred, so. That'll be allowable, but in this instance, why we put the one thirty was we um. We wanted to um. Show, we wanted to get an approval for monies that were above, that were already previously authorized. Based on the allocations as well as the current authorization for next year. I think there was a, uh now that I look at this, we'll have to look at that when we go through deliberations, I think there was. Another small amount that we might have gotten above what we thought of when we did this, it was a big a hundred dollars. That's something that I can look into and add to one of these to make that uh. Get the the total appropriate amount for uh this year, but that's the low sip funding. And you see that on the next page, the low sip funding, then you'll see the transfer from the general fund, then water and sewer are there. Board of Ed has numerous needs, I'm sure the uh superintendent will talk about that, there's um. There they 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 had some serious interest in some HVAC monies and as well as Chromebook monies and. Um, there's uh probably needs for um significant monies in tennis courts, um so. Uh could definitely quit a few needs, um but there was uh, so the this is a nice list of of many of those needs. That you'll see on one thirty-eight amounted to around seventy-nine million dollars. It's a little five-year plan. And then uh if you go to the next page, that's showing. The the net uh the building and planning that's showing your grant match of ten thousand, the P O C D of seventy-five thousand. Um, emergency management, no funds were allocated, the fire department was uh sixteen thousand thirteen and fifty-five hundred. Um, there is a possibility and and um the fire chief may be able to speak on this next week more um. Uh, there is some possibility that some more additional funds, we had put monies aside for um motor power uh. Motorboat um. What are the motors, there you go, motorboat motors. And um we put aside some of monies aside, the working through getting some of that, that pricing and that funding. There is a possibility that additional funds would be needed in that, so they're uh looking through that and. Um, obviously, there's, that might be something that might need to add in this scenario and or. Adjust or uh something that we need to address at a later point in time. Uh, but uh that just was brought to my attention today. Um, but uh that's something that uh, you know, possibly could be considered and uh. I'm sure the fire department will get some more information for us on that. Um, the next uh area there is the grounds maintenance, you have the ride on mower replacement, a hundred sixty-five thousand, the vent track. Um, other uh items are listed, they're listed out further, um the library, that shows you the three thousand for the AED. It has some of their other items uh out there as well. Um, the one there that could come up is is that the public copier is a little bit aged. Um, that was one that they bought uh years and years ago, um so that may be something that uh if that. You no longer be fixed, that they would have to address, um but uh hopefully that will not be the case. But just uh wanted to bring that to your attention, um so looking at the age of of that machine. And um. Uh, parks and recreation, we have the monument restoration, uh then uh the Parks and Rec and field improvements, that's a low sip item. Um, for twenty-five thousand. And then uh police with the cameras. Next page, we have the building maintenance, the replacements of carpeting and flooring, twenty thousand, that's a low sip. Uh, me scenery. Basement improvements townwide, thirty-five thousand, that's a low sip uh possibility. And uh HVAC upgrades various buildings, ten thousand. Um, the highway, uh vehicle maintenance, uh we have the sidewalk non-grant. Um, why we put in monies for non-grant, often there's matches that are required. On items and then also um to try to complete projects, um if we if we do have a. We don't, we don't have enough low-sip money to complete a project, so um sometimes we would put in a sidewalk non-grant. We're trying to do accomplish some sidewalk uh reconstruction with the low sip, so we put in fifty thousand one seventy-four in that number. Um, the pickup replacements of ninety-two thousand. Uh, resource recovery, resource recovery is definitely in need of um some containers. Uh, let's continue to watch that, um that one, we did not, um due to the. Decent size of the transfer in on the general fund already, we did not increase that transfer in to. Uh, put monies into uh the containers, but at some point uh that may become a. Significant necessity and uh um the public works director will talk on that if uh if and when that becomes a matter. Uh, sewer department, um we have three hundred and sixty thousand for plant and system improvements. And then twenty thousand to start the SCADA process for the sewer department. That's a total of three hundred and eighty thousand dollars, and the townwide, we put the twenty-one thousand for the computers and peripherals. Um, no monies were set aside for revaluation this cycle, um. You know, we're gonna have to keep watching that as the next cycle continues, um and um. There'll be, will be a trust when uh uh you know, as funds become available. And uh hopefully next budget year, um uh eight nine one three oh, water department. We have about a hundred thousand dollars here for facilities and system upgrades. Um, that also does have water, you know, can be water mains and other. The kind of a catch-all for more or less improvements to the water department. Uh, full systems uh survey, that's a requirement that is um. Uh, becoming uh required um of more or less leak detection. Uh, throughout the system and um putting it in the capital is hopefully. Um, you know, that will lead to further capital improvements. Uh, the 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 initial, the initial review will be done through capital and then we'll have to see how. The updates are, if there, if it's an operational update or if it's always continued to be capital, we'll have to see how that. Once we get the first system review completed, we'll be able to know how that works going forward. Um, there is a cross connection software upgrade needed, um so there's about twenty thousand dollar cost in that. Replace mainline valves, we put in twenty-five thousand, remote me read meters and reading equipment, twenty. Five thousand and um replacement of fire hydrants of five thousand. To get to the total of the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Total of one point two seven six six seven four of capital in this year. Made up of a hundred and thirty thousand, what's it be for state grants, five sixteen, five hundred of transferring from the general fund, three eighty. Three hundred eighty thousand from the sewer department, two fifty from the water department.
Nice job.
Thank you, sir.
So we like to keep going, working with table this for the evening. While we do now. While we keep going.
All right, on page nineteen. This is the Board of Selectmen Budget. So in this, you'll see an increase of uh one thousand seven fifty for program services. This is really the increase in uh filming and and the various meeting coverage. Of all the different meetings that we have in town, seems that's where we're trying, where we charge these the. Um, do the increase in the minimum wage, uh the we've increased uh. The fee that we pay these companies, the contractor type people to um amount over that. And therefore uh the additional funds, as you can see, we have some of the twenty twenty-three um line item. At a twenty twenty-three, I don't think there was anything other than uh payments of um. Well, there's maybe a few, I think, but the majority of that cost was payments of people for doing these various meetings. The program services is supposed to be for other things as well, so we're trying to put some funds in there uh to provide that. Uh, page twenty-one, this is made up of the first selecting the executive assistant. Um, they have their conferences, meetings and dues. Um, the Connecticut Conference Municipalities is keeping their fees consistent, the small town council of small towns. It's keeping their consistent, uh the Millsix Chamber has kept it consistent. And uh the program service fee is uh consistent. Page twenty-three, the Athletics Commission, um slight increase in the miscellaneous because the P O boxes. The cost on those just keep going up, so more or less that's what we're just trying to cover the cost in that. Uh, probate uh court, probate court went up by a quite a bit of money. Uh, it appeared that the probate needed. Uh, new, uh four new fireproof filing cabinets and additional rented rental space for storage of wills. That amounted to an allocation increase there where we had to pay twenty thousand two fifty based on their uh budget.
We we didn't have a say.
Elections, um, the increase here is the estimate of to cover early voting. There is a presidential election in this, um in this one as well. So those are also usually bring up the um supply costs as well as the election worker stipends. But those additional days for the early voting are um. You know, that those are a challenge and and are resulting in what we're expecting as an E two or so percent increase in the budget. Finance Department's going up about uh three and a point one five percent. Uh, this has our full, full-time employees as well as one part-time employee, um. The rental of use of buildings, that is um. The overtime for custodians for the use of schools, um where. Other outside vendors that are not associated with the park and rec utilize the school. And therefore those custodians get charged to my budget and then we get uh the property rental income. In our operating uh revenue line item for property rental, um so that's why that's going up. Um, sometimes they have um. They've been having some more events, especially now as the buildings are open more. Um, service contracts, service contracts, just they do continue to rise, annual prices. Amounts of the, uh they they rise and we have ADP in there and um a few other um service contract vendors. The uh. Data processing is where we pay for the ten ninety uh five for some of the um. Specific recording, recording requirements um for the town and the board and um also. We pay for very, you know, check stock and um various time cards and all those type of scenarios. As well as uh various computers for the finance department as needed. Page thirty-one is the collector of revenue budget, this is just the collector of revenue, um her assistant is. Uh, half-time between the sewer and the water department. Um, the service contracts is the majority of that is um our, our uh is uh. Quality data system, that is our main um vendor for taxes. Uh, they also, uh there's a fee that we have to pay um. For an online service as well, so that's um the increase in that budget. The assessor has the two full-time employees, it would be the assessor and the assistant. Um, service contracts um are a cause of the increase there, it's it's kind of slight, there's multiple. He has multiple uh service contracts that are required for uh for the assessor. And um that's the uh increase in that amount, so the global three point three percent increase in the budget. Uh, Board of Assessment Appeals, we have no increase. The uh town council budget is a, is a decrease in the majority of the decrease was related to that many of the labor. Agreements were settled in fiscal twenty-four, so we're hoping that um we won't have. Um, a lot of labor and pension matters. Just note, if we do have pension matters, those are um quite expensive, so we'll have to watch that, but if if hopefully we won't. But if we do, um those are um substantial. Page thirty-nine, um this has two employees, um. We do have uh, we're seeing some in uh increase in the index recording, the software vendor that we use. For that uh for for the whole indexing recording system is uh that contract is expiring. Um, the, we're not sure, we we have heard that we're, they're not gonna renew in the same manner as they once did. And um so they, you know, there may be a review of whether, you know, to continue with that land record system or. To um, you know, switch to a different, but with that being said, there there is an expectation of an increase. Um, and therefore you see the increase in my three three oh two. Central services, um those are more or less the items that we do centrally, um. Those that has a zero percent increase on that budget. Um, we have seen advertising costs go up um as we utilize that. More or less, there's the current in the middle town press are really the two uh main ones and um. And then we do have printing, sometimes we're printing, when we were required to print, those are often go up, sometimes with publications as well. Those are often go up, sometimes with publications as well. We do have publications that we have to buy for various departments. And those we've seen a spike in the increase in that as well. But overall, we're gonna try to get by with the amount that we have had as budgeted. Page forty three, the technology budget, this is two full-time employees, one part-time. And sometimes the cost of the town tech. There's been change in personnel there, so right now we are down one employee, we're. Have advertised. The big increases in the licensing and this is a budget where we house like the licenses for some. Other departments, so in this instance. We had run up about six thousand dollars, was that was leisure fish agreements that they. Planning and zoning and building department were utilizing. We estimating a nine thousand of permitting licenses. And then thirty five hundred dollars for tie and bond G I S license. That are, that are fees that are, those are all. Except for the nine thousand, the other ones are all known, the nine thousand is an expected, expected amount. We do think that we may have a decrease in overtime with some changes in personnel. Some of those overtime might shift to the other departments as the people come in on the, on the overtime call in. That's really that, that's the change in that budget, that's a two point six overall budget increase. The fire department is a two point two eight budget increase. Has the. Part of one of the secretaries has amounts in there for the stipend. And amounts for. Few of the people that are on the. Pay plan for the apartment, training. We've increased that by a thousand, there's been going up. There, there's a possibility of a need for more in that service contracts. We see that that continually does rise, that the eighteen thousand dollar number is not. Does not work, so we've increased that to twenty two in an effort to try to get that closer to the reality. Licensing, that's a continual increase based on the current software that they have. Medical supplies, there's a requirement to carry. Epi pens, so therefore there is a increase in thirty five oh one. Hopefully that that's enough that we put in there. And then. Repairs and maintenance continue to rise, so we went up about fifteen hundred in that lumber. That's about the increase on that for two point two eight percent increase. And the fire marshal's budget was a five point three percent increase. In this instance, really it was just. Little bit with the gas and diesel, seems like they're there more often, doing more field work. So we went up slightly on the gas and diesel. And then payroll is just about the amount of just hours. They've, they've definitely requested more than that, but we'll put in what we thought we could address here. Emergency dispatch is the next page, majority of the increase is change, is the change related to the middle town dispatch agreement. And then we also have the fire alarm monitoring for the whole. Town is in this as well as the regional medic dispatch agreement. Fifty one, police department. This has the twelve funded positions and then the one halftime. Or there's one, the additional thirteenth officer, but it was as a half year. As we didn't think, based on the number of openings that we have, we didn't think we were gonna be able to fund it, or we weren't gonna have positions available by July first, so. Thought we would put it in the thirteenth officer that was in for this year's budget would be added half year next year's budget. We did increase to the police private duty line item, so there was some savings in the regular payroll due to the change in personnel. And then we increased the police private duty line item. As that one is continually is, is far above the number that we had normally had. So we try to get that more near reality of what we've been doing. Service contracts has gone up based on the agreements there, we had estimated around seventy seven hundred dollars for storage and wireless connection. For the new traffic cameras that were gonna be in capital, and then there was some other, other service agreements that were also required. Licensing software is increasing due to the various licensing agreements that they have for the Police Accountability Act. Uniforms obviously is increasing because of additional employees. As well as the cost themselves. That's really the increase in that. Next budget is emergency management, that's a zero percent increase, no change. Building department is made up of the building official and then one. Full-time person that's split between the planning and zoning. Department and the building department, so it'll be half of a secretary and the building official. And that's the change that.
Seventy three will be the next one.
We can, I think we might stop for tonight, what do you guys think? We do about an hour, we'll pick it up tomorrow, we're gonna be right back here tomorrow.
I mean, Dan's here tonight, you have to come back tomorrow then. Can we just get through his department or?
Yeah, you wanna do a land use? Whatever you guys want. Do land use and then we'll break for the, tonight.
All right. Land use. Planning department, it's made up of. The planner and an administrative halftime of, half of an administrative assistant that's shared with the building department. We do see an increase in the plan consultant, we have a known contract with, on parcel updates with tie and bond. And then the additional monies are used for various plan consulting that are required. So that's a three point nine percent budget increase. Next budget is zoning enforcement, we still are looking for a zoning enforcement officer. We did, you guys did approve an increase in the wages on that, so we've estimated around a thirty five thousand dollar. Amount. Therefore, it's showing a seven points three six percent, but it's just a twenty five hundred dollar increase. Plan and zoning commission. You go down this, the amount, this two thousand, two twelve, twelve thousand, seven, ten. Is the amount of the lower cog based on their budget, so that's their amount and then the, all the other amounts. Remain unchanged. Zoning Board of Appeals is eight seventy five board clerk. Court transcriptions and conference meetings and dues all one thousand one eight seventy five, no change. Inland wetlands commission, there is a. They, they've gone over on the, on the board clerk. Kinda, you know, that's our, there was, there was quite a bit of activity this year, so we're leaving that alone, but it's possible that it. You know, if activity remains high, we would be slightly. Under budgeted there, but again, just relatively small amount. For the enforcement officer, we went up slightly in the amount. Again, there was quite a bit of activity this year as well as in twenty four. Global increase in this budget is one point seven nine percent. The Conservation Commission, there's no change in the budget. Economic Development Commission, there is no change to this budget. The Capital Commission, there is no change to this budget. Health and the department went up by point four or five percent and that was based on their approved. Chad on health budget. Fifty two is a non, more or less a default budget. And those are the items that are related to Mr. Brian.
Thank you, Tom. So we'll start with the social services tomorrow then. All right, so just so everyone knows, tomorrow night, seven o'clock, we have a singular board of select meeting. And we're gonna jump right into the budget, again, we'll continue on with the workshop and then at seven thirty. We'll reconvene with our regular meeting as normal and then we can pick up the budget again after. So with that, I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion adjourn.
Sean, is it a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor? Great, have a good night, everyone. Thank you.